We'll call the meeting to order. Right, join us. Okay, one quick announcement, all board members are present this evening, we have two that are or were online, I guess they're still there. Dr. Zimmerman is present, however, she's asked if I would coordinate things in the meeting since I'm in the room and that just makes it a little easier, so. I'm not sure what the proper term for that is, but that's what we're doing. Oh. John, do we have any citizens comments to the board on agenda items?
We do not have any online comments, however, if anybody's watching and would like to make a comment to the board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down to the school board meeting notice, click on the survey, enter your comments and they'll be read later on in the meeting. Back to you, Mr. Heath.
Thank you. I also failed to mention that we met in executive session for possibly thirty-five minutes prior to night's meeting, which does couple of personnel issues and if we have a legal issue, I don't know, just personnel, alright, good. Moving on. Select presentation, so again, to hear about school opening. Make it easy to start down, go down the line.
I'm good, thank you. So the, the day before school started, we had kindergarten orientation, which is always a nice way for families to come in, or I'm sorry, two days before. Nice way for families to come in kindergarten rooms, they get to see the classrooms, meet the teacher. And, and just reduce some of that anxiety building up to that first day of kindergarten. The teachers do a phenomenal job of getting their rooms ready and prepared, everything labeled. Bulletin boards, everything prepared, ready to go. Several days in advance, so the kids can see what their room will look like and where their cubby is and all their supplies and materials. And then I think that was such a strong way for us at Kelly to kind of get the ball rolling and ready for the year. Convocation was amazing, and I think that was just that momentum and that positive energy and vibe really carried over, and I think we're riding that, that positive sentiment. To date, so it's been a good couple of days and we're gonna keep that going. But I thought Kathy did a great job and everyone just having a great way to bring everybody back and welcome everybody. The kids are back and, and the staggered start continues to be, I think such a positive for our district and, and the families. It can be challenging when you have kids in different grade levels that they don't all go on the same days. But just seeing the benefits for our kids. And it really gives staff the flexibility for all hands on deck to help with those kids within the, the grades that, that are present on those days, and I think that's something that they really excel at, that they're being there for the kids, helping in any way that they can. It looks different at each level, but that's a top priority for them, really making sure that kids have a great first experience in the schools. And then today welcoming first through third grade at Kelly was awesome and seeing STEM for the first time, which is a new class. Mrs. Miller's done a phenomenal job developing that curriculum. Gave her an A plus because it was tied into the sandlot, so like he doesn't get any better than that. Building a catapult to fling a pop-pom over the fence, so the dog didn't get it. And she just said even trying to figure out a way to explain STEM to second and third graders was a challenge, so showing that movie and they all got it and just loved it. And it was really cool just instantly to see them come together and starting to work in teams and collaborating and brainstorming immediately on the first day. And overall, I think just the way all the staff rally and, and do everything they can to give the kid, kids the best first experience at the Kelly level, you know, you have tears from families and from the kids, and I think just the handholding, walking the kids through the little hug or the saying the kid's name when they come in and you see those tears and that anxiety kind of just melt away, they see their friends and they're up waving and, and saying hi to each other, it's, it's a pretty awesome thing just to see the, the power of those positive interactions. So we're up and running at Kelly and, and ready to keep on going. Pass on to Chris.
At Lindtown, just, just an incredible start as well. I, I, I want to start off by thanking the teachers for, they were very anxious about being able to get into their rooms and with the construction going on. And they worked very hard, but there were several teachers that went out of their way to help parents and kids. Especially children that were feeling really anxious about the transition and they would meet with them on their own time in advance of the school year and just really reduce that stress and that anxiety, so that was, that was really amazing. Our IU classroom that came in is up and rolling very, very well. Ms. Treadwell, Treadway, who is the teacher in that room, has it very well organized and structured, and those kids have had a great first couple of days of school. I think the thing that, that I was so impressed with at Lindtown, seeing the operation for the first time is just how the staff as a whole, they're, they're totally rallying around each other, the support staff take care of a lot of the details within the cafeteria and a bus dismissal and all those things. But you know, our teachers came out, the fifth grade teachers came out to welcome the fourth graders and the fourth grade teachers came out to welcome the fifth graders today. And just really put smiles on their faces from the very, very beginning. And, you know, the other thing I think that I was really touched by is our, our specials teachers, like from the first day. I, I remember seeing Mr. Zeke coming out and he's like getting the names, all the, like he, I, I don't know how he's remembering twenty names on the first day. But he's really working at it and they are, they are bound and determined to make sure to make those kids feel comfortable as quickly as possible and trusting them as quickly as possible and just it's a, it's a fantastic start to the school year, so I'm really looking forward to tomorrow when both grade levels are in.
I have to echo that it was so good to see kids in the building again after just like four days ago, it's scaffolding and step ladders and toolboxes and now it's school again. And full of kids and full of kids and their energy and it just was so good to see. We had sixth graders for the first time, we didn't get to have an orientation the night before. And so the kids were very wide-eyed coming into the building, but the sixth grade teachers all came in early so they could be in their rooms, so all the rest of us could guide the kids. Do you know who your homeroom teacher is, what your homeroom is? And yes or no, it didn't matter, we were gonna walk them down to their homeroom, introduce them to their homeroom teacher. And that really helped the day get on, on a good. So by the middle of the day, I met with all the sixth graders in a, in a class meeting and asked out for how many of you has this day been a little better than you expected and like ninety-five percent of the hands shoot up, a lot of smiles. We get to go into questions and answers, they can't wait for clubs to start, I think it's just, it was great. Speaking of clubs, we are gonna have signups on Monday. We have, you know, different vibe in the building, a lot of teachers bringing new ideas. Relying on kids to offer up suggestions for clubs so that we get all the clubs filled. And it is just really fun to see the staff do their magic with the kids, kind of like what Chris was saying, how they go out of their way to try to make the kids feel comfortable. And that is pervasive, so a lot of hugs, a lot of hellos today, a lot of, oh, so good to see you again kind of things, and that's from the kids to the teachers, but going the other way too, so that was great. Did our reps training and that was seventh and eighth grade teams today and asked them for a little help being the role models as the older kids in the building. Being the role models for the sixth graders and secretly telling the eighth graders to try to be role models for the seventh graders and set a positive tone. So we're off to a really good start. Let's see how it goes.
Alrighty. Um. Continuing with the sentiments, great first two days, I shout out to our link leaders who are our junior and senior kind of orientation mentors that help with the freshmen, again, as, as Eric had mentioned. You know, the staggered start, the way that we do that, that was one of the things that came about is COVID. But that we actually realized, you know, there are so many benefits to it and something that both, you know, kids and, and staff have, have asked us to continue to do. The ninth graders love being able to get acclimated to the building and go through the cafeteria and the lunch line. And all of those things without having to worry about upperclassmen in the building. Link crew met them in the morning, they were out here along with staff, kind of cheering and welcoming them in, they had an orientation for about an hour in the gym. And then they take them on tours of the building, they help them in their advisories, help them get their laptops and everything set up. And then those students also, every Tuesday, they will go to the freshman's advisory. So they'll just be again, their kind of sat presence, is that mentoring. You know, presence, certainly we know everything about the research about a successful transition to high school being instrumental in students' overall high school success. And you know, it's just, these kids went above and beyond, they, they did not have to stay the entire day, but several of them chose to. You know, it was just really nice to see them interact. Ms. Yankowski has been our link leader since its inception. And we now have Napoleon Meyer, our German teacher, is our assistant link leader. And so they just got the kids really pumped up then and showed them around the building. Today, we welcome back our tenth through twelfth grade. And again, it was just wonderful to see kids after not seeing many of them for an entire summer. And they were certainly excited to come back, see teachers, see their friends. Our, our new staff has done an awesome job this first week. So it's just really been a positive. One of the things we did do yesterday and today. We met with teachers that have ninth graders yesterday, the ten through twelve teachers today. And just ask, you know, if there was anybody that they noticed maybe, especially if, if they haven't had a student before and doesn't know their particular personality, like anybody that seems especially withdrawn, anybody that seemed disconnected, anybody that they just initially had any concerns about that we know, you know, maybe we need to, you know, just, just keep an extra eye on that student's transition back. But we are super excited to be back and looking forward to a great year.
Josh, yeah, I think we're, so we just.
Uh, I mean, I could certainly add, you know, last two days were great. Basically, seeing kids again, having those class meetings, so we met with tenth and eleventh grade today. So with meeting with them and just kind of going through procedures, things that we're looking for for the year has been nice and then basically being able to connect with them individually in the halls, helping them with their schedules. And then also just some ideas that had come up through like the link leaders and then also some teachers just helping some ninth graders navigate through the halls with some signs and stuff like that. Has been very, very nice, just as everybody's kind of trying to help with that transition, help with basically kids find their easy ways around the halls and now also some teachers as well with it being a newer building. For them, not for.
Chris?
Uh, okay, sorry, I, I wasn't prepared.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Stephanie, you got anything for the greater good?
Yeah, I have been in multiple buildings and today I found myself in Kelly in what, having the kids come in off the buses and say good morning and then showing their backpacks, their new back to school outfits and their brand new hairdos, it's just lovely to be in the surrounding buildings and seeing kids back in the classroom, it just gives a whole different vibe to everything, and I just want to say thank you to the teachers and the administrators here, how we collaborate and work together to provide support in the ongoing conversations we have, because that's so important to have those connections at the start of school. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that will move on to our board action and we'll start with an item that we've done informed of the last meeting, John, you can give us a refresher if you'd like.
Well, yes, it is the quote for the endotherm energy savings program. We are asking you to approve these two quotes here this evening so that we can take the savings that we found this last year at Kelly and we can spread that across all of our buildings as we decrease our energy use hopefully, so we would ask that you approve them this evening.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion?
I would just ask that we get that same table like they provided us for Kelly, for each of the buildings after the year trial, hopefully they'll do that for this part of the contract.
Yes, I believe we can request that data from here. And do.
Oh, so I have a follow-up question then. Yes, so this is a trial year, trial year for the other buildings?
No.
No, it's a three-year contract.
Yeah, we're committed, yeah, it's a three-year, but we'll get the data just to see how much safer we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or questions? I'll give me a real call vote.
Dr. Unzicopacera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the grooming machine for the baseball and softball field, which we also got some information on last year and subsequent, John?
Yes, as a follow-up, there was a question last time as to how much of a warranty is provided on the infield groomer? The answer is there's a three-year warranty on the chassis and the engine and a one-year warranty on the hydraulic parts. However, in talking with the dealer, it depends on how well it's maintained and how well it's used. I'm sure our guys will take very good care of it because they like to make their equipment last long. There are models that were purchased in 2014 that are still out and still operating even eight years later. So I believe this would be a good investment, we believe we will see some time and labor savings for using this to maintain our investments in this baseball field as well as our other baseball and softball fields.
So the laser leveling system is not warranted? Because you just talked about the thing you drive.
Yeah. The laser leveling system is, it is not warranted, it is thirty-four hundred dollars for the system. Oh.
Oh, we didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Second.
Now we can discuss.
No, yes, yes, you're, you're right, it's not specifically mentioned. Although would that be considered under the chassis or would that be an add-on? That'd probably be an add-on. Again, the laser leveling system is about thirty-four hundred dollars, presumably it's not going to see a lot of wear and tear.
So I have a question. Understanding that this will take less time, it'll take time away, I, understanding all that. Is there a significant amount of maintenance work that is not being gotten to now because like that's where I'm struggling, I mean, we could buy a ton of product that will make every job be less, but at some point the cost of that.
Yeah. I believe, and Delaware, you can speak to this here, I know that there are some maintenance tasks, like for example, the summer. We had to put off some PMs, we had some preventive maintenance stuff, we had to put off other installation, like for example, the whiteboards at the middle school got pushed to the very end and they're not even still done. While this won't save, you know, an entire FTE, it will allow things to get done in a shorter period of time, which will free up the guys to to complete more tasks during the day, and so we hope to get to things sooner rather than having to push them off.
And do we feel like, and this might be getting too in the nitty gritty, but that so for two people that are doing the job now, is that just to put the rates on and take the rates off or the two, like is the second person needed the entire task through that? Like we feel like we're scheduling to efficiency at this point?
It, it will help the efficiency because yes, the person, the second person has to be there to put the, put the coarse one on and then one person drives it around. And then they have to take that off, help take that off, so they can't really go anywhere per se. And, and this would basically allow one person to do the whole job and, and free up the other person to go take care of other tasks while this is going on.
How much are we spending right now to have the field fixed, like one flow or something, what is it?
Um.
It's two fifty.
I think it was like, yeah, it was two fifty to have the infield picked up. Yeah. So again.
We don't want to, that's the, that's the work we don't want to lose, because the grading doesn't do a lot.
Yeah.
So. And, and would that be regraded like annually, like is that, like if we didn't do this and understanding that we rake it, so like the grading schedule so that we don't lose the grade, is that an annual grading schedule that you do?
I would think it would, I mean, this is the first time we've had a real baseball field, so.
Fields get drugged like every day.
No, I know, yeah.
If we don't maintain the percentage grade on the field over the course at some point, we're gonna have to have somebody else in the current contract, whether it's Hummer or another contractor, certainly, depending, if they're part of the six million dollars to do that.
You know what that X might?
Feel themselves, you don't, you don't have to necessarily have that cost because we're doing it, so we don't, we're, we're doing it every day. And then we're adding the sort of, we, because we're gonna keep a surplus of baseball material here. We're doing that in back door and putting all that stuff in there in the season, they're not gonna be needing for us to come in and have so many, many, you know, charges, very important, whatever it is. And also talking to the guys, the Hummer, we can maintain that field and keep that field away, it needs to be maintained. You know, we're looking at, you know, twenty years before we have the community, so any sort of major, maybe like ten tons of dirt back on the field every block. So much from, you know, our religion. It's, it's, it's definitely made contact.
Though, does the laser, does the leveling portion of it, does that happen every time it's used, or is that a special?
Oh, that, that'll be that. They, they recommend we use it every time we go and, and, and grade the field before games or on a weekly basis. Keep, to keep the percentage great. We would do it every time we take that out.
And that's how you keep it from ever getting.
Actually, use the field.
So, yeah.
That's the thing that I'm wondering about. It's, it's getting, even at a practice, it's getting. You know, and if we're talking about that for softball and baseball, I'm just trying to sort of get my, my field maintenance primer happening now. Um, but then are you going to need to as a result of it being of rain and regular wear offseason, are you gonna have, are you gonna be using it then too?
Yeah, the recommend, they, we, I've been talking to them about offseason maintenance too. There's a lot of.
But less time, right?
There's a few things that they do recommend that we do in offseason when we can have field. The one is to create at least one. We don't mean, we may not need to do as much as we do during the season when there's two, three or four games play on it in the week. But they do, what they do recommend that we grade at least once we get out in the summer and into the fall. That way we, we maintain that field. If anything we do in the offseason, it helps us come back around to the field day. Then we need to get the field ready to play. We've been maintaining it throughout the course of the year versus just trying to get everything ready. Right at the beginning of the spring. It's not, it's not gonna, you know, we're gonna spend eighty hours on that field to try to get it ready to go on.
And it's both fields, softball and baseball.
So basically, this would, this would, using this regularly would prevent the need for hiring folks like Hummer or somebody else. Who honestly would come in with this exact same equipment, go around, level out the field with laser, add in field material where necessary. Basically, we're doing it ourselves, using our own equipment at a lower cost than hiring an outside third party, um, on a regular basis.
Which costs what usually? Do you have any idea?
I don't know what it costs.
Um, it's, I mean.
Yeah.
I think that's where my struggle is, is like the cost of, like where the cost of that is and of what does that typically look like? Like, is that an annual thing? Is that like, I mean, we might do it in ten years type thing, like that's.
I think we would definitely have to have somebody coming at least annually to, you know, to grade and, and, yeah.
It's hard to say because we've never.
Well, that's the thing, like, we haven't, like, we're putting all this into the baseball field, and obviously, we don't want it to get to a place that it's bad, but like, we haven't. Like, we haven't even seen the wear on the baseball field.
Yeah, more is gonna wash away. Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean. This will give you. I mean, this isn't magical. It's gonna tell you if you need more soil, so that we're gonna be.
We're gonna be able to see it, and we're, we're grading, we're gonna be able to see, like, if it says, you know, the, the levels here, and we go over it, and there's no dirt, you're being over looking to add dirt.
Right, which, that's manpower, right? So that's not gonna, that's not gonna take away the field maintenance still. You're still gonna be adding dirt all the time.
Yeah, by the way, and where the field is, the height of the field there, so you're gonna be just gonna be dirt.
So we're, we're essentially paying for the leveling part of it, which tells you how much dirt to add.
Well, that, well, people have to, I mean, it's, it's, does, I mean, with a lot of.
Are we using field covers too?
We're gonna need to.
I was gonna, I mean.
Mount and, uh.
I actually think those are already there unless they've disappeared.
Where will it be stored, especially during the winter?
I believe we have a shed location found. We do not need to acquire a new shed. We have a shed location picked out.
You have a location picked out? You don't, we don't need to buy a shed?
No, we will not be purchasing a shed, no.
So you have an empty shed?
You have an empty shed somewhere?
We have a shed that we.
Not empty, yes.
Well, we're, we're working on.
Jordan has a comment.
I'm sorry.
I think Jordan has.
Yes.
Sorry, I was just waiting for a break in the, in the discussion there in the room. Um, two quick questions. If we're not sure that, you know, what, what the maintenance contract might look like, I mean, can we table this? And possibly pursue getting, you know, I would, I would love to know what it might cost to have a company come in. Um, and then the second question, is our maintenance crew, you know, this sounds fairly high tech, um, you know, do, do, are, will they be, will they require, sorry, I'm stuttering. Uh, will they require any type of training with this? You know, do we have the capability of actually operating this, uh, to its fullest potential? Uh, to really maximize the investment that we're making in the machine. Uh, do we have somebody that, that knows how to drive it immediately and knows how to use it?
I won't even drive it immediately, but yeah, we can get through the change. I, I, I'm, yeah, I heard it's not that my guy.
We, yes, we believe, uh, our guys will take to it quickly. Um, they will be trained by the dealer, uh, when they deliver it. So that they'll be able to operate it, much like we received training on the, uh, painting robot. Um, and yes, we could, we could get an estimate from, uh, an estimate from Hummer as to what the, um, maintenance requirements would be if we were to contract that out.
That would be good, no.
Is there anybody else in the area that has something like this? Any other districts in the area?
That's what I'm aware of. Does Buck now, or any other? I think, I can.
I, I would imagine.
We, we can check, but, uh.
I know, I know he has. They have sold, using, sold quite a few in the last month, but I haven't been able to, and, and.
Yeah, we're not sure if there's anybody that's local.
In which case, maybe we could ask locally what their, like, what their costs are for the gradings of their fields and their upkeep. Like, we would be able to get an idea locally if they don't have one of these, what the cost is. I would agree with Jordan. I mean, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the amount of money and, but, not that I think it's probably great, but with not having all, I don't feel like we have all the information.
Yeah, we can, we can go back and, and get some rough estimates as to what it might look like. Again, since we've never really had a baseball field like this to maintain. We can go back and get some rough estimates from folks that do do this on a regular basis.
And what it would be to have someone else do it, how and when, how often that would have to happen?
Exactly, yep.
This is really not needed until baseball field is A, fixed and B, used in the spring.
Well, um, as Delbert mentioned, once it's fixed here, hopefully by the end of summer, we are going to want to use the groomer equipment periodically, even through the winter when it's clear. Just to keep things tidied up, so you're not spending, like you said, you're not spending two weeks right before with all this manpower trying to clean it up after a winter where it's. Snowed and rained and blown, you know, and, you know, doing a little bit here and there over the winter, we'll keep it up so it's more ready during the spring. But we can definitely find, uh, find out estimates of what would be involved for an outside service to provide this.
You think you could have that by our next meeting?
We will give it a shot.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so we'll table that and come back to it.
I think we need to vote on.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, motion to.
Somebody want a motion?
Yeah, okay.
Well, there we go. Do we have to vote on it?
Yeah.
Let's vote. How about a voice vote?
You can do a voice vote, yeah.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Any opposed? Very good, that's tabled. So, we get to talk about baseball one more meeting consecutively, uh. Board action, new business, so the, we have the ARP Esser Funds. Um, John or Mrs. Moser, who wants to take that?
Um, so as you recall, back when we were planning our HVC modernization project, we included a portion of funding from the ARC Esser Funds, uh, ARC three point O, if you will. And now we have been fully reimbursed, uh, through the ARC Esser Program, and that has come into our general fund account. And so I would ask for your permission this evening to move those funds from the general fund into the capital fund to replenish, as was part of our original financial plan. To pay for the HVC modernization. So I would ask that you authorize me to do that this evening.
So, second.
Um, any discussion? Paula?
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yeah.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unsicupusaro?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, next is a resolution to submit for the PCC D grant, Mrs. Moser.
Thank you. We look to submit our school safety grant here before, uh, August three one. And in order to do so, one of the stipulations in the PCC D grant is to have the board take a resolution of support. And show that clearly in our agenda and minutes of a board meeting. So here tonight, I ask that you take that step of action that we can go ahead and submit our school safety grant.
So, move, second.
Any discussion? Paula? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unsicupusaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next up is the association for the bargaining agreement. Um, Dr. Zimmerman, did you, did you wish to say something?
Uh, sure. So this is the, um, collective bargaining agreement with the, um, LAEA, which is the, um, teachers' union here. Um, this is a four-year agreement that will begin in, on July one of twenty twenty-three. Um, this has already been ratified by the association, um, with unanimous support, and I would just like to say, um, um, on a personal note, what a pleasure it was to work with the union leadership on this. And I think we came up, um, with a really wonderful agreement that serves everybody well, and I hope, uh, the board will feel able to support it tonight.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Paula, roll call vote please.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicupusaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Paula. That brings us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. My report this evening is, is somewhat lengthy and it's written there for you in your individual folders. I'd ask that you take a look at it. What I wanted to do this evening was, um, bring you what I feel is a compilation of, uh, two years of Dr. Baugh's, uh, service to the district. And I do believe a lot of the positive benefits and, and programs, as well as initiatives, uh, brought forward by Jennifer. And as we get excited about starting a new school year and moving ahead, uh, in many ways across the district. Um, we are going in some of our directions with some of our good pieces as a result of the kinds of things, uh, that she brought forward. So again, I ask at your time and opportunity that you, uh, uh, take a look at it. Um, it was an easy list to compile. There were a number of pieces. There are a number of pieces speaking in present tense. And again, uh, tough time to be a superintendent over a COVID pandemic and all the other challenges. And, um, I do feel that Jennifer's strengths in leadership and, um, her strategic planning and her genuine desire to examine our programs that were already good. And take us to that next level of some even better teaching and learning, um, is shown here in some of the pieces that I have listed for you. Thank you.
Do we have any board and committee liaison reports tonight?
I'm happy to go ahead. Uh, you have your IU report in front of you. Lots of new staff. Um, and there were some policy, um, things that we voted on as well.
Uh, you should have the Sun Tech, uh, summary in front of you as well. Uh, it was our first meeting with our new director, so that was exciting. And, uh, we have a new superintendent, um, that's over there for the next two years, so, uh, it was a lot of, uh, introductions and, uh, just some good stuff going on. Um, and I'm happy to report that, uh, Lewisburg has its highest attendance at Sun Tech in at least seven years that I've been on the board. Um, maybe Mrs. Moser, uh, Ms. Reber, maybe, uh, you guys can know better as far as how long, you know, how back that, how far back that goes, but, um. I believe the number off the top of my head was forty-nine or thirty, I'm sorry, forty-one or thirty-nine. Uh, so it is a, a high volume of students that we have attending Sun, uh, which is also exciting. Um, that comment was shared with us at the, at the meeting. Uh, people noted that Lewisburg had a higher attendance this year, so, um, definitely some fun stuff happening over there.
All right, uh, we're more on the consent agendas. Are there any items of the consent agenda that need to be held up separately to provoke? All right.
Motion to approve. Second.
There we go. Any discussion? Paula?
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicupusaro?
Yes, with the exception of the, uh. Volunteers, because I'm on it.
Oh. Sorry. Um, Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes, with the exception of this year, IU services agreed.
Motion carried.
Um, that brings us to director's comments. Kristen, would you like to go first?
Sure, I will go first. Um, I got to attend my first convocation on Tuesday, um, and it was amazing. Um, we heard a couple times this summer, um, from Mrs. Moser that there was kind of this energy building in different meetings that she was having. Um, and it was really amazing to see that firsthand on Tuesday, um, with all the teachers and staff, um, and everyone who works in our buildings there. Um, so that was, I, I really enjoyed that, so thank you for the invitation to attend. Um, I think it's been said many times this week, but I am going to say it again, that our custodians and maintenance staff deserve all the attention and thank you from every person who runs into any single one of them. The fact that, um, we opened on time, um, is. You know, there are some out there that didn't think we could do it, but we did, and it is because of them. Um, so thank you to them. Um, I also wanted to, um, just again with the collective bargaining agreement that we agreed to tonight, say thank you to everyone involved with that. Um, you know, when you tell people you're on a school board, there's like little things they assume that must be miserable about your job. Um, and I think some, you know, the collective bargaining agreement is one of those things. Um, and again, just reflective of the people who make up this community and work in this community, um, that is, that is not what happened. It was a lovely. Lovely conversations that took place, we've been told. Um, and so I am grateful to everyone that was involved in that and the teachers, um, who now will carry out those contracts, so thank you. I think that's it. Oh, I was gonna say too, I did wanna say, I do agree that the staggered start, um, is great. There's, I, like, there's things that I'm sure are difficult for some people about it, um, but having a kindergartner go this year, you know, we went on Monday and she saw our classroom and all day Tuesday, she kept saying, I'm not gonna remember how to get to my classroom. I'm not gonna. And I could say with confidence that the halls will be lined with teachers, the parking lot, the getting off the bus, everything will be lined with teachers to help you get to your spot, and that completely alleviated any worry she had, um, and that can't happen. Those teachers can't all be out there in all the buildings for all the new students. Um, so thank you for that. So now I'm done.
Fair.
Um, this is one of the first years that mine all started the same time with this staggered start, so that was fun. Um, I'm a little bit disappointed that no one mentioned the air conditioning.
Oh, my gosh, me too.
Why is all my? Really? Um, very exciting. Actually, I'm glad that you did mention it. That means everything else was going on awesomely and whatever, and my daughter didn't mention it until I said something to her. She goes, I was actually cold, and she wore a long sleeve shirt, which I was like, okay, whatever. Um, I, I'm super excited for the school year, and I just gotta say, we did, uh, a little soccer scrimmage that got moved from Tuesday. I didn't get to watch JV, but we beat Lancaster Midnight, so that's a good sign, because that's not, um, just a run-of-your-mill soccer team, and, um, as the varsity Lancaster Midnight boys were walking off, I was standing there and they made a comment, they're like, yeah, like the second half, blah, 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 and I was like, those were mostly JV boys playing, you know, so. It was good, it was nice to see because we've had a very good soccer team for a lot of viewers, in case anyone doesn't know that, and so big shoes to fill, and, um, I have two boys on the team, so I'm super excited, so, um, there's that, and um, oh, I wanted to say thank you to Kathy, because I, I sometimes have questions and I don't ask, and I actually asked her two questions, and I really do appreciate. It wasn't just like a, yeah, Tara, you know, it was, it was an extensive email, I was like, gosh, I am sorry that I took that much of your time, but I appreciate that, and so if you have a question, ask, because you're gonna get not just the, the yes and go away, it's, it's a very thoughtful answer, and I appreciate that. Well, now, it's definitely enough. I wouldn't expect anything different, to be honest, but at the same time, I, I really, it kind of maybe could have been a yes or no, so. I was like blown away, so, um, I know you have a lot on your plate, so I appreciate it, and, um, yeah, I'm just excited for a new school year, and, uh, I wish my kids were all excited too, which is awesome.
Very good.
Um, I, again, I'm gonna repeat about convocation. It was really lovely. Um, I think everybody that spoke, even the retirement meeting, it's like engaging, I was like, this is, I've never been to such a good retirement. I was like writing things, uh, so, um, but I, you know, when Mrs. Moser spoke, I could, I snuck a peek. And, and they were all really focused and really wrapped, and that says a lot. Um, and I think this district has been, I mean, you know, we're lucky in so many ways. You know, it's not poured down trodden up, certainly, but like all the districts in the country and in the world, if they have district. It's been a rough several years, and, um, you, it felt like home, and I think that means a lot. It meant a lot to me as a community member and board member and parent of former students, um, so thank you for that. Um, I, I really love that, 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 the visual of the middle school teachers lining up and making sure those sixth graders who didn't get that time. Because honestly, like, that's stressful for those kids. Um, and the high school, the ninth graders, I remember, Daniel, but Daniel was fine, but when my daughter went seeing Paula greet her and take her in the door, it was like, I went, okay. Like, it's not just them, right? The parents see that, and when new parents come to the district and they see, they see that. They're like, what? That's crazy. It's not crazy. It's what we do, and you guys make that happen, and so we're really grateful for that, so thanks for continuing to do that. Um, and I was thrilled to hear about Sun Tech, um, having a high enrollment, and, you know, when I went to high school, I remember very clearly, um, kids that went to Sun Tech. Um, and when I went to a different high school, the kids that went to the VOTech where I lived, and, um, you know, my husband went to VOTech. I think the, the value there, uh, that our students are seeing that, that our families are seeing that, is, um, just, just really wonderful, really pleased. So, and go this school year, woo woo.
Um, so same, um, mentioning of convocation, I think something that was really great there is to see how many seasoned tenured staff that we have. Um, it is a different time than it used to be. People don't stay at jobs for forty years, you know, you don't get the job right out of college and stay there, and to see how many people, and the ages, to see that people seem to be coming right, like, right out of college and staying with us, and I think that's really says something about the district, and I think that's really great, and it seems like it's a place people wanna stay, and I think that is to everybody that is being part of that, which I think is wonderful. Um, I like hearing about the Link Leaders Program, because sometimes I'm not, don't have children in the high school, so I don't hear a lot there. And I think also, which was just kind of a blurb, but to say that there's a second teacher that's helping, I think it's always so important when you have something that seems to make such a difference to build that bench strength and have other people, because sometimes you have such a great program. And then if that person that was really behind that program leaves or retires, like, that program crumbles, so to know that, um, people are seeing the value and having other people assist with that um, is really great and is only going to add to that program and keeping it, um, and showing the benefit of that. Um, this staggered start, I'm glad to hear that it's going so well. I will say, I'm not on board like ever before. I, I have always been somebody that has hated the staggered start, um, which I think really comes from growing up with a single parent that had to get to work at certain times, so I always have that in the back of my head of how hard it is and try to, um, not look at my privilege if I now work out of my home, so it doesn't affect me. Um, but I do think my kids really like it. I hear a lot from parents, I hear from the teachers, so I do think it is a really good thing. Um, I just do try to keep out there on the struggle that it is for some parents. Um, I know if I wasn't an only child, my mom would have definitely struggled with that. Um, the AC in the gym, I was so glad to, or the AC in the schools, I was so glad to hear that my son was cold in the middle school gym. Um, especially considering that's one of the spots that is not all the way finished, to say that he was like, no, it was really chilly, they have four tubes, and it was, and that was great to hear, because he has it at the end of the day, and it was like eighty-five degrees that day, so that was wonderful. I'm good to know that that's happening. And I don't know if people realized, other districts actually were planning early dismissals this week because of the hot weather, and that was not anything we had to worry about, so that is wonderful. Um, the other thing I just wanted to comment on is communication, um, because I think especially when you have students in the schools. Um, we see such varied amount of communication. Um, I think the newsletter that came out was wonderful. Um, I know my sixth grader, um, he's a very mellow person that's never anxious, and he was very anxious about going in, and multiple times just randomly started with, I'm so glad that we had those questions and answers, and that made him feel so good. So I think that was really a good thing to put out and was really beneficial. Um, another teacher that I just happen to have, um, again, that was my son's, was, um, Mallory Sample. Um, just to give a kudos to her, she, um, put out on the app that she uses, actually, um, a video going through the school that showed like a tour, and it came out like after the newsletter, so it was great to see the pictures, and then she kind of narrated it like, this is where you'll come in, and this is what it'll look like. Which I think was really great, and is just something to think of, that for some people, it is really uncomfortable to do that communication. I'm actually somebody that this is a struggle for me, and outside of my box. Um, so maybe looking at people that seem to do a really good job at that. Um, because it seems as you go through the grades, like our kindergarten teachers, they rock, you know, you're getting class pictures and all those types of things, that's what they do, and as you go up, it becomes harder, the kids get older. But leaning on some of those people that just do a really job, a good job communicating to maybe help people that it is not as comfortable with. Um, because it also empowers those people to say like, hey, we see you're doing a good job, so just something to think about, because it tends to fade out as you go. Um, and that's really all that I have.
Heather?
The one takeaway I'm getting here and also from convocation is that I think there's just this level of experience of educators here, um, who very well anticipate the nervousness of kids. And put all these wonderful systems in place to ease these awkward transition times. The link crew, these folks over at the middle school anticipating the nervousness at every building level. Uh, grownups and peers or older peers available to make kids feel ready and comfortable, so. I've really, that's, and then also add convocation, hearing, and everyone knows Kathy, and everyone knows how wonderful she is, and she knows us and the district so well. So, here we are transitioning, but it doesn't really feel that awkward or painful, because you've got. So, that's my take.
Yeah, I'd piggyback on that entirely, and I will say, I didn't send you an email, I asked you a question, and you gave me a yes or no answer. It was perfect. Right in there, so you get both. You get whatever Kathy thinks you need. I thought convocation was wonderful. That was just a, a fantastic set of presentations, and the mood was, was very good. Um, I'll share, you know, just from my, my own kids. I do, I wanna highlight though, I like the, the STEM, uh, classes, that sounds great, um, I my kids didn't actually talk very much about their classes. They both talked about activities. So one about the play and one about sport, and that's what you get when you get two, I guess, and so we always have to remember that the district is about the whole kid. And so they all go through the classes, but there's so much that the coaches and the club advisors and the, you know, pull-out teachers, everyone contributes to the kids' experience, and so, um, just really so much appreciation for everyone that recognizes, it doesn't have to be a class, it doesn't have to be formal, it's that hello, it's the high five, it's, you know, don't forget to fill out the gold sheet instead of.
It's that hello, it's the high five, it's, you know, don't forget to fill out the gold sheet instead of the pink sheet, uh, you know, which will be electronic next year, I imagine. But it's all very, very good.
Jordan?
No, I don't think anything else to add, um, just echoing all of the sentiments already shared.
All right, Virginia, I will not forget you. I was gonna give you the last word. Uh, Kathy, anything additional you wanna share?
No, I just express gratitude, express appreciation. Thank you, those of you who were able to be there. This is the team. This is the group of administrators that make it great to come to work and do what we do every day. And thank you, thank you for the kind words, and again, they're all a big, big part of how we get to where we are and where we're going here as we start a school year. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, I will only say, uh, there was a question earlier, and I know that everybody in this room already knows this, but in case anybody's listening online, there was a question about school safety. Um, we and very intentionally do not comment publicly on school safety or procedures or things that we are doing. Uh, but we will, we will reassure people that it is a constant um priority. It is something that's being looked, has been, has been looked at all summer, is being looked at currently. We voted on a item tonight that's directly related to school safety, and I believe Mrs. Moser said she was gonna publish some, some broad bullet points on the uh superintendent's page, so that if parents have concerns, they, they'll be able to visually see that it really is something being done. Uh, and that's about that. Virginia, I'll give you the final word.
Thanks. Um, I just, I'm very sorry that um I I wasn't able to be with you tonight, and that I wasn't able to attend convocation. Um, and I just wanna thank everyone from, you know, the, the custodians that, um, I think it was uh Kristen or Tara who gave the shout out to the custodians, um, the cafeteria workers, the, the office workers, the secretaries, all of the teachers, all of the maintenance folks, like everybody who worked so hard to make this school year begin successfully, physically, um emotionally, academically, um, and I wanna congratulate our returning um faculty and staff, and I wanna welcome our new faculty and staff, um, and just wish everyone a really wonderful year. And it's just even, even um from the distance of Zoom, I, the excitement of the new year is palpable, and I'm just really happy for, for the kids and for the whole community to see how this year unfolds. Thanks.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Any comments on a non-agenda item? I forgot to ask that.
Nope, nothing online.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Have a good evening.